Good evening, everybody. And before we get started tonight, I'd like to welcome Jason Howard from Stone Creek Church here in Milton to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Bow our heads, a moment of prayer. God, as we bow our heads tonight, I want to thank you for the blessings and provisions that you've given to our city. And I'm grateful that we have the freedom to speak and to know that even if we differ from one another as citizens, leaders, staff, we can also show one another peace, patience, kindness, goodness, and lead with self-control. Pray that you protect our law enforcement, our EMS and fire personnel, and ask for your blessing over Mayor Lockwood, Councilmembers Jameson, Cookley, Coontz, Bentley, Hewitt, Longoria and Morag, as they gather today intent on doing good work and what's best for our city. And pray that this council seeks to represent fairly and well those who've given them this task, and that their efforts will be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. And may their personal faiths and conscience give them strength to act honestly and well in all matters that are before them. And I pray tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jason. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, October 21st, 2019, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully, and if you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please bring your comment card to the clerk, which right here on my left, as soon as possible. While the Milton Rules allow a speaker to turn in their comment cards up until the clerk calls that agenda item, once the item is called, no more comment cards will be accepted. So... And if our Madam Clerk will please call the roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the October 21st, 2019, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cellphones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of the organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outburst, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coontz.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Carol Cookerly is absent, and Councilmember Rick Morag.
Here.
Okay.
Would everyone please rise for the pledge of...
And before we do the pledge of allegiance, I've got a couple of special guests here, Mateo and Victoria. If you guys will come up here and help lead us in our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, with every hand and touch of its finger. Thank you so much for your help. Victoria and Mateo are here with their families. Their parents are here tonight, so we're new citizens that live here in the city of Milton. I'd again want to welcome everybody here tonight, and if our clerk will please sound the next item, which is the approval of the agenda.
Approval of the meeting agenda, agenda item number 19-224 with the addition of an executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Okay. Do I have any other changes on the agenda that anyone would like to make? If not, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the meeting agenda as prepared with the executive session added for land acquisition.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Okay, do we have any general public comment tonight? Have you got any cards in?
No.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. If the clerk will please read those items.
First item on the consent agenda is approval of the September 23rd, 2019 City Council Meeting minutes, agenda item number 19-225. Number two, approval of an agreement between the City of Milton and the Georgia Bureau of Investigation regarding a memorandum of understanding and an equipment agreement relating to the startup of a Georgia Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force in the City of Milton Police Department, agenda item number 19-226. Our third consent agenda item is an approval of an access agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, and Ring, which will provide the Milton Police Department access to the Neighbors Portal to communicate with users of the neighborhood app, Ring Neighbors, agenda item number 19-227. Fourth, an approval of a settlement agreement with Comcast Cable Communications LLC for underpayment of franchise fees, agenda item number 19-228. Number five, approval of an agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, and Flock Group Inc. for the Milton Police Department to participate in the Flock Data Sharing Program, agenda item number 19-229. Our sixth and final consent agenda item is approval of the following subdivision plat and revisions. Name of development is Nick's Crossing Land Lot Number 452 and 485 at 910 Nick's Road, a minor plat to reassign addresses for a total acres of 5.14 and the density of 0.58 lots per acre, agenda item number 19-230.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion on the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Morag. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to our reports and presentations, and if our city clerk will please sound the first item.
First item is a proclamation in recognition and celebration of new United States of America citizens residing in the City of Milton. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, this is an honor for me tonight to present this proclamation, and once I read it out, I will ask the council to join me in presentation. In recognition and celebration of new United States of America citizens residing in the City of Milton, whereas the City of Milton values the contributions of immigrants and new citizens who help foster a spirit of inclusion that enriches our community and preserves the legacy of a city of freedom and opportunity, and whereas the City of Milton wishes to acknowledge immigrants' commitment to the United States of America and its constitution and to the idea of liberty and justice for all on which this country has been founded, and whereas the City of Milton recognizes those becoming citizens of the United States of America who live in Milton and choose to enjoy the rights and privileges of full United States citizenship as we all strive for a more perfect union. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton recognize residents of the city who have recently earned the rights and responsibilities incumbent upon every citizen of the United States of America. And this tonight is going to be presented to Alvera Galvez and Sandra Purcellis, the City of Milton residents and new United States of America residents, and this is given under my hand and the seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on this 21st day of October 2019. And if you guys could come up front and the council join me in presenting this proclamation. And also thank you for Mateo and Victoria for helping us with the pledge of allegiance. You guys did a great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Wow. Thank you so much. All right, I'm not going to say a word. Stay right where you are. I'm going to give you a count, one, two, three. Take a few. One more. Great job and congratulations.
The next item is the proclamation recognizing the 2019 Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Councilmembers Joe Longoria and Rick Morag.
Thank you. It's our honor to actually present this proclamation tonight. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and...
Whereas breast cancer is the second most common cancer among women after skin cancer, and...
Whereas one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer at some point in their life, and...
Whereas over 268,600 women and approximately 2,670 men will likely be diagnosed with breast cancer in 2019, and about 40,000 women will die from the disease, and...
Whereas in 2019, there are more than 3.1 million women with a history of breast cancer in the United States. This includes women currently being treated and women who have finished treatment, and...
Whereas every woman is at risk for breast cancer even if she has no family history or other risk factors of the disease, and...
Whereas the percentage of survivors five years or more after being diagnosed is now 89.7% because of the efforts of various organizations have made regular contributions to spreading breast cancer awareness through outreach education and screening programs, and have empowered women with life-saving message of early detection and the importance of having annual mammograms.
Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton, Georgia hereby dedicate and proclaim October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Milton and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens, given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on this 21st day of October 2019. I just want to tell you that we do this every single year, and it became very, very special a few years ago after my wife was diagnosed with breast cancer. I'm happy to be up here to tell you that she's sitting in the audience, and every once in a while, she doesn't make it to this meeting because she's out playing tennis or doing something else. But none of that would have been possible without the quality health care that we can receive in the Atlanta area. And I just want to make everybody aware of two things that we said in this document. The first is early detection makes a real difference, and I can't emphasize that enough. And the second is, if you are diagnosed, living in the City of Atlanta in the state of Georgia is a huge benefit because the program here is very well-run, very finely tuned, and there's a lot of technology and capability and resource here in the city to help you out. So, Rick.
And I'd like to say that this is very personal to me also. My wife actually is sitting in the audience also. She's a breast cancer survivor with no history of breast cancer in her family, the family tree. It impacted us when we had young children, and I also am very thankful for early detection. We were living in the Atlanta area, and she was treated. And as Joe said, sometimes his wife isn't able to make meetings, my wife the same too because she's always working out or playing tennis. So, and as Joe had mentioned too, it's important that you actually do get early detection and get it treated. So, this means a lot to me actually to be here along with you, Joe.
Yeah, so, anyone who is a breast cancer survivor would like to join us up at the front, we'll go down, I'll provide you with a proclamation, and we can have our picture taken by Courtney again.
My friends, one, two, three, yeah.
Keep going, keep going that way.
Can you hold your proclamation up? Yep, just like Mrs. Longoria is. Yep, good, okay, all right. One, two, three. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, if our clerk will please call the next item.
Next item is a presentation of the 2020 Census. Michelle McIntosh-Ross.
Greetings. I'm actually modeling the census items that we have, and Tammy, we thought you were going to sit over there, so we have a bunch of bags like this for everybody up here, but it's on this side. Okay? So, again, greetings. I'm Michelle McIntosh-Ross with Community Development Department, and here I have with me Cody Hendricks, who's a staff member, first time at council meeting, so he's our planning tech, and he'll be working with the census. And then we have Ed Mitchell. He's a partnership specialist with the Census Bureau, and he's with the Atlanta Regional Census Center, and he lives in Milton and Crooked Creek, so we have somebody here to help us out. Let me move on here. Okay, so that was the introductions. This is the overview of what I'll be presenting tonight. We're going to talk about the census and what it is, why we should be doing it, the local preparation that was done for the census, getting residents counted, the census schedule, and recap that the census is important. Okay, so, what is the census? Oh, my screen went... I'll just wait. Oh, it's back up. Okay, great. Okay, so, census is an official count of a population. It's actually referred to as the actual enumeration, so anything... So, every 10 years, the census does a count of everybody in the United States. This is per the Constitution. We've been having a census, 10-year census since 1790. The U.S. commemorates the census on April 1st every 10 years. So, unlike when you have a birthday every year, this is every 10 years, so April 1st of every 10 years will be census day. It's used to share $675 billion in federal funds to do roads, public works, hospitals, schools, social programs, et cetera. There's several things that the dollars are used for, and every person counts and contributes to figuring out how much the allotment will be for each city, county, and so on. This allotment is for every 10 years, so whatever you get counted at for the 2010 census, that amount of money will be proportioned every year for over the next 10 years, so you really want to get that number accurate so that you'll have the right amount for the next 10 years. Okay, also, responding to the census, a non-response to the census questionnaire can result in an undercount and resulting in less funding allotted for Milton. For the state of Georgia, we figured out from calculations that each person, based on the last census, is like 1,600 per person, so can you imagine if you were undercounted by any amount as like $1,600 per person, and then you carry that throughout that whole tenure?
Michelle, is that annual 1,600, or is that just for the term of the census?
I believe it's annual. I'm not sure. I think it was annual.
That's per person per year.
Yes, exactly.
So, times 10, 16,000 for a tenure period.
Right, exactly. It's used to determine the legislative representation, as you know, for every level of government, including Georgia representatives, also Milton City Council districts. An undercount in any area of the city can skew the district lines. It's also used to calculate population projections, business locations, service delivery strategies, local long-range planning. We have our comprehensive plan coming up. We need, you know, to be able to get those numbers accurate, and we use it for all these different planning mechanisms. This is a map that shows the 2010 results of the apportionment. So, if you notice, I'm going to use my cursor, so Georgia was able to add one official. Now, Georgia's response rate was in the 70s, below 70%, and we still were able to gain a seat here. So, if you imagine if we had a better count, we may have, you know, gotten another seat there. Also, the census counts every person, and the goal is to count every person once, only once, and in the right place. That's the goal for the census. It's the civic duty of every citizen to be... It's the civic duty of every citizen to be counted per the Constitution. Also, this year, it's never been done before, the census will be available online, it's just going to be about 10 questions or so, and you can go fill it out online. You also will be able to request a paper questionnaire if you want to do it that way. But online should be easy, especially for a place like Milton, we should be able to get early response online. The data collection is private, your information will be protected. And just to, if you recall, for the 2010 census, our numbers came back as 32,661 people. Our response rate was in the 80s, low 80s or so, so can you imagine, again, if we counted everybody, this number may have been more, and also, every other projection from that number could be different. Just in-house, and with Georgia Power and other helps, the estimate for right now and coming up for 2020, we're thinking it'll be more like 40,000 people, but of course, we're basing it on the 32,661 and adding households, so we'll just see what happens. Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, a little bit about the local preparation that has been going on for the census. Back in 2017, there was a Luca operation launched by the Census Bureau, I don't know if some of you on council, most of you would remember the resolution that we adopted November 20th, 2017, to participate in the Luca operation, which is the local update of census addresses. We've been working on that throughout 2018, Alicia and Cody worked with me on that to get all of those addresses updated. It's an operation that we verified the list of addresses that the Census Bureau had, and we added, deleted, and modified any addresses that, so that it would have a complete list for this upcoming census. So, we worked on that, we submitted around 2,376 new addresses to the census, and then we also participated, and it's actually ongoing, it's called the New Construction Program, which we're submitting all of the new construction of residences from March of 2018 to April of 2020, and so far, we'll be submitting roughly 300-plus new addresses, we'll submit that on Friday, that's the due date for that new construction program. So, the point is, we want to be able to have all the addresses in the system so that when folks go out, when the census gets, the questionnaire is answered, we'll be able to tie it to addresses. And also, if push comes to shove and folks' census workers do have to come out to your address, we hope not, they will have the correct address to be able to come out to get that questionnaire filled out. Some of the things that we'll be doing to help get residents counted, we're going to be working on community engagement, we've already had meetings with Courtney and her staff and other members at City Hall. Just to note, December 23rd is, marks the 100 days before the census 2020, our last meeting here at City Hall is December 16th, so we may do a proclamation at that point to mark the 100 days before the census. We're also going to be promoting the census at city events, provide assistance to residents at City Hall perhaps, we'll have kiosks with computers so that folks could respond to the census online. Also, you know, probably have iPhones, iPads, sorry, at some of the events that we have so that folks will be able to fill their census out if they choose to. We're also going to leverage the many citizen volunteer committees that we have to assist with getting this complete count of all of our residents. Also, we are coordinating with the county and other neighboring cities, schools, libraries, et cetera, homeowners associations, churches, other clubs, anything we can think of, we'll get ideas from you guys also if you so choose how to get the word out so that we can count everyone in the city of Milton. This is the schedule per the census, so in early March of 2020, households will be getting postcards or letters with information on how to go online to answer the questions, also information on how to request a questionnaire if you want a paper version. Also, please, if you, we want you to respond at that time so that we can have an early response rate, just go ahead and go online and respond at that time to help with the response rate for Milton. In late March, if you didn't respond already, then you'll get a follow-up postcard, and then, of course, April 1st is going to commemorate Census Day, and optimistically, I'm believing that, you know, all of our residents would have responded by then, so no problem there, but if you hadn't, you can still respond. This is what you don't want to happen, is in May to July, you'll have somebody come out to your house to try to get you to respond, so census workers will be deployed at that point to all of the addresses, and they have the addresses, we already provided it to them, so, to come out to get you counted. And then in August, that's when the data collection window will close, and all of the data will be tabulated, and so by December of 2020 is when we'll know how much, how many people we have, so the director of the census will report to the President of the United States. Okay, again, the census is important, some key points in here, 2020 census will be easier than ever before because you can go online and fill the census questionnaire out. Taking part in the census is your civic duty, so it's a good thing. The data collection, again, is private, is protected. Our share of the $675 billion will be at stake, so we definitely want every person counted. Fair representation is also at stake for the state of Georgia as well as the city of Milton, and the data collection is just invaluable for all of the information that we will have for the national and the local economy, for the infrastructure and the service provision, and, you know, all of these things affects our quality of life, knowing exactly how much we need to apportion for any of the services that people provide is important. And that's it for my presentation, any questions?
I'm sorry if you said earlier, when will you, when's the first day you can do the online?
Yeah, in early March.
Early March?
Mm-hmm.
So, we don't know the exact day, we just know around about.
Yeah, yeah, so you'll get something in the mail, and it'll let you know what website to go to to go ahead and fill it out.
Awesome.
Question two, just legal question, is it okay for the city to promote information and whatnot?
Yes, 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 yes.
On a website?
Yes, and let me mention that this whole week, we will be, the Census Bureau is conducting a national recruitment for workers of the census. They're going to be hiring 500,000 people or so, so we want to get over a million, right, applicants to work for the census. Anything you want to add there?
Yeah, and one other comment too about the response rate. One of the things that we will do this year, it'll help people like Michelle and other townes, is we're going to make available real-time how people are responding, so that you can look at the various census tracts within your area, and you can see maybe in the, and we expect the area to be low will be where there's a lot of apartment complexes, because people in apartments tend to not be very good about filling the forms out. So, you'll be able to see real-time what the response rate is in the various areas around Milton, so then you can target your campaigning to those specific area to try to get the numbers up, so that's one of the things that we will make available to people, to the folks that are working to get that complete count in their areas this year, so... That was not available in 2010.
Yeah, we're using technology to get real-time results, yeah, it's good.
Rick?
Just one question, when we talk about apportionment of, and what actually the census impacts, doesn't it also impact how Fulton County distributes some taxes within the county and what cities get based upon population?
Oh, yeah, yeah, all of those things are tied back to the census, any population numbers are always based on census data originating, yes.
Our two second largest tax revenue, or revenues, next to property taxes, are based on that, so insurance premium taxes and consent laws.
Great, okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Did you say that even our own local districts can change too based on that as well?
Yeah, because based on where the population falls, yeah, then the lines could change a little bit, yeah, yeah, and I'll be back tonight, we have a resolution later on tonight that'll establish the partnership between the city of Milton and the Census Bureau, so I'll be back. Okay? Great.
Thank you guys.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to first presentation, if our city clerk will please sound that item.
The first presentation is the consideration of an ordinance amendment to the city of Milton's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 32, Article 2, Offenses Against Public Peace, Order, and Morals, Agenda Item Number 19-231.
Okay, do I have a motion on the first presentation item?
I can motion to approve the first presentation item, Mr. Tammy Redd.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Coats with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Now, let's move on to our public hearing, if the clerk will please sound that first item.
Consideration of the issuance of an alcoholic beverage license to Trophy Atlanta Management, LLC, doing business as Trophy Club of Atlanta at 15135 Hopewell Road in Milton, Georgia, Agenda Item Number 19-232. Bernadette Havel.
Good evening, Trophy Club of Atlanta has gone under a change of management, new management is requesting a license for consumption on premises of wine, malt beverage, and distilled spirits, they are in compliance and staff recommends approval.
Do we have any public comment on this?
No, did not receive one.
I'll close the hearing. Are there any questions, or I'll open up for a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 19-232.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Coats, for approval, all for approval, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay? If our city clerk will please sound the next public hearing.
The second is a consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Deep Roots Wine Market and Tasting Room, LLC, doing business as Deep Roots Milton at 12220 Birmingham Highway, Building 80, Suite 102 in Milton, Georgia, Agenda Item Number 19-233, Bernadette Havel.
This evening, Deep Roots Milton is applying for a retail package of wine and malt beverages and an ancillary wine tasting license, they are in compliance and staff recommends approval.
Any questions? Do you have any public comment? I'll close the hearing, and if there are no questions, I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 19-233.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore with a second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous. Okay, we don't have any items tonight under our zoning agenda, so we'll move on to unfinished business, if our clerk will please sound the unfinished business item.
First item is consideration of an ordinance amendment to Chapter 48, Article V11, Division 3, Section 48-585, for prohibitions and uses in the public right-of-way to address fixed objects with the right-of-way, Agenda Item Number 19-221, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have on front of you this evening unfinished business, an ordinance with respect to prohibitions and uses in the public rights-of-way to address fixed objects, this was actually a very utilitarian amendment, it was meant to capture two things, one was the fact that the city of Milton is, from time to time, reviewing those structures that are in the right-of-way, obviously, a city government, like a county government, has an obligation to keep its right-of-way reasonably clear of obstructions and hazards, et cetera, but the language in the city of Milton's code was probably in need of some refinement, specifically, the code found that anything that is in fact fixed in the right-of-way was a de facto hazard, that's actually not true, there are things in the right-of-way that are out of, either they don't block vision or out of the normal line of traffic flow that are simply not a problem, so we changed the code and put in some language, if you'll look in the, hopefully you'll have a marked-up version that's got some underlying language, simply to provide that irrigation systems, landscaping, fences, walls, non-operable vehicles, trailers, boats, dumpsters, and other fixed objects within the right-of-way, where it used to declare them are not allowed and are safety hazards, now it provides that in the reasonable opinion of the city traffic engineer or his or her designee may pose a safety hazard, are not allowed within the right-of-way, to obviously give some reasonable engineering-based discretion as to what in fact needs to be removed, and the reason this is important is because, first of all, if we begin to embark on a system of methodically going through and demanding that private property owners get whatever these fixed objects may be that are serving their property, but nonetheless, in our right-of-way, out of the right-of-way, we want to be able to explain why, because in the decision and discretion of the engineer, this is a problem, and that's why your neighbors gets to stay, because of the decision of your engineer, it's not a problem, we need to have that sort of discretion, otherwise, you can see where that could go. The only other change is we added some language down at the bottom with respect to mailboxes, certain fixed objects such as mailboxes, if it's a fixed mailbox in the right-of-way, I think that, and it's basically brick, we're going to require those to be removed, so... Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here for questions.
Open up for questions. Here, Nick, can I get your opinion on the mailbox, the fixed mailbox, you know, with other jurisdictions, and I say that in respect, you know, people's property rights with their mailboxes, but I also realize that it's a very dangerous thing, too.
Right, the problem is, is they're in the right-of-way, so they're in, they're on city of Milton property, and there's two hazards, one, of course, is obviously the notion of the motor in public hitting something that is brick in the right-of-way, and secondly, it's the limited view, I mean, these are typically almost like basically small monument structures where another much less invasive facility can accomplish the exact same thing, so it's fairly much in line with what I've seen, Mr. Mayor.
And this legislation forces existing ones to be taken down?
Could, yes, sir.
It could.
That's right.
Explain the could versus will.
It'd be just a matter of resources, the ability to do it, the amount of money we want to put into going out and doing it, obviously, we don't want to cause, you know, Milton citizens more agitation than we need to, but we, I think there are some in mind that the city has been looking at that may have some serious problems.
So, Ken, in all this language, there seems to be some type of implied liability for private structures on public right-of-ways, is that what you're suggesting?
There's always a liability component to obstructions in the right-of-way, it's maybe beyond the scope of the meeting with respect to how liability can actually be attached to the city, it can involve aspects of notice, prior histories of accidents or collisions at a particular location, but this will at least give us the tools to be able to go out and do a methodical review of the city's right-of-way, having the tools to get rid of those that we believe need to be gotten rid of, and allow those to stay that our engineers just don't think are a concern.
Okay, because, and the reason I brought that up is, we don't want to impact our citizens with things that they can't possibly get done quickly, but yet, if we change the language in our ordinances to say that these structures can't be in the right-of-way, who becomes, are we creating a problem for ourselves if some kind of an accident occurred with a structure that's in the right-of-way after we said, remove all structures from the right-of-way?
Well, it's funny that you're asking that question because that was some of the genesis for the change we're talking about, because if you read it right now, what it says is, is anything fixed in the right-of-way is a hazard, and it's not, and that's why it has that reasonable discretion of an engineer to give us the very flexibility you're getting to, because that's just not the case, you're going to pass on the way home tonight, fixed objects in the right-of-way that are not a threat to anybody on the road, but then there are those that are.
Okay, Rick?
I guess continuing on in the case of mailboxes, if you have like a monument-type mailbox, and the city deems it's a hazard, it needs to be removed, who actually is going to bear the cost of that removal? If that's, and then what's the process, is there, I'm assuming there's some type of via notification?
That is being debated right now, and that is probably something the council may hear about in the future, we have gone back and forth, so what I don't want to do is get ahead of your city manager. Because I think he had some ideas on that, and I know that when Carter was here, Carter and I discussed it. And, and so this has been a dialogue that has been going on for a while. But just hear me when I say that we understand that there is a difference between, we feel like we need to do this, but how much disturbance do we want to impose upon your citizens? How long do we want to give them to be able to do this? And of course, there is a monetary component to it as well. So we're just going to have to make the best recommendation to the council we can make that treats everybody fair, as fair as we can. But I, it's a fair question, thanks.
Matt?
Yeah, Ken, what's some of the, the data on the mailbox stuff? I mean, are we seeing accidents caused by them considered as hazards on a regular basis?
Not aware of a fixed structure, you know, brick mailboxes causing any accidents in the City of Milton. We have some other situations where fixed stone structures in the right-of-way have caused considerable concern. And again, I won't go into the detail, but you all know what I'm referencing. And so this is more sort of a, of a, let's get ahead of this and let's make sure that we have the ordinance that can accomplish something on the front end as opposed to having to deal with it on the back end, if, if we believe that's appropriate. But in the case of, of these fixed object mailboxes, and again, the code says, you know, brick, stone, concrete, we may need to take a really hard look at those and then work with our citizens to explain why we're doing, what, you know, giving them reasonable time to get that out of the way, replace it with something else, and maybe think of a way to address the financial burden on that. We, we get it, we do. So Councilmember Coontz, I don't think I answered your question directly because I don't have hard data. But I guess what I'm trying to suggest is, is that this is a process of which this is only a step in that process.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 19-221.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous.
No, it does not, no.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to vote no on that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And those in, not in favor, opposition, please. So that passes. Five in favor and one, Councilmember Coontz in opposition. Okay, we can move on to new business. Madam Clerk, if you'll please sound the next item.
Yes, so consideration and possible adoption of a conflict waiver authorizing Gerard and Davis, LLP, to serve as local council for both the council and the PBFA regarding a revenue bond transaction between the Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority and the city council to include review of the pertinent intergovernmental agreement. Agenda item number 19-234.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is, you've seen me come to you before on this, this is a conflict waiver. And what that basically means is that my office, as the city attorney, not only will we represent the city with respect to the revenue bond transaction that actually is going to be the subject of the meeting immediately following this meeting of the Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority with respect to the revenue bond. That, of course, involves an intergovernmental contract, as the council is aware, and I will be, in some respects, reviewing both the council's view of that intergovernmental agreement as well as the PBFA's view of the intergovernmental agreement, which has me on both sides of the transaction. Therefore, I believe the better reader of the ball rules is I need a conflict waiver, which basically says, I'm coming to you and telling you, I'm going to be performing that work on both sides of the transaction and asking you to waive, which means release or relinquish, any concern about a contract. I hope the council understands and knows me well enough to say that I don't believe there is a conflict because our interests are aligned with the Public Building and Facilities Authority. You are, in fact, the Public Building and Facilities Authority. And if there was anything that marginalized my ability to represent the city or the PBFA zealously, I would get out of the transaction altogether. So in light of that, I would ask that you all approve this waiver and allow me to do the work.
Okay, any questions on this? Okay, there are no discussions, I'll open up for a motion.
Motion to be approved, Agenda Item Number 19-234.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Coontz with a second from Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, if our clerk will please call the next item.
The next item is a consideration of a resolution establishing the partnership between the City of Milton and the 2020 United States Census. Agenda item number 19-235. Ms. Michelle McIntosh-Ross.
Yes, greetings again. So yes, this is a resolution that we have here just to formalize our partnership between the City of Milton and the Census Bureau to help conduct the 2020 census. So basically, some of the things that I went over in the previous presentation, we want to support the goals of the 2020 census to disseminate information, which we plan to do, also to encourage residents to participate in the 2010, 2020 census and respond to the questionnaires. Also, we're planning to provide advocacy through the various committees that we have at City Hall and speak at the various events that we have to let people know about the upcoming census and to support the accurate and complete count and to strive to achieve a complete and accurate count for, of all citizens within the City of Milton. So those are the things we discussed, and this is what the resolution is about. So if you have any questions, let me know, otherwise you guys can make your decision.
Do we have any questions from Michelle? Okay, then I'll open up for motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 12, sorry, 19-235.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our final new business item. If our clerk would please call the next item.
Consideration of a land acquisition agreement for purchase of realty between the City of Milton and U.S. Bank National Association for Fulton Tax Parcel Number 22442006710238 at 14620 Freemenville Road, 12 acres, for purchase price of $1,250,000. Agenda item number 19-236. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have in front of you an agreement for sale of realty. The proposed purchaser is the City of Milton. The proposed seller is Toward Point Mortgage Trust, 2018-2, U.S. Bank National Association, as indenture trustee, which is the seller of the parcel of property, is approximately a 12-acre parcel located at 14620 Freemenville Road in Milton, Georgia, Fulton County Tax Parcel 2244-2006-710238. Purchase price is $1,250,000. The proposed earnest money that the city will in fact pay to an escrow agent is $25,000. The due diligence period is, is accelerated. It's 45 days. If, in fact, the City of Milton pulls out of the contract within that 45 days, we can do so without any penalty and for no cause. We will in fact get our earnest money paid for, or paid back, forgive me. And if we don't, and if we let the 45 days elapse without withdrawing, then we will be required to go ahead and close. There are some additional stipulations and language within the agreement. I don't know how granular the, the city wants to be with this. Although I have reviewed it, my office has reviewed it, we're, we're comfortable with it. The only sort of idiosyncrasy about it from my perspective, it's, it's a fairly tight window, but I think that was a requirement candidly of the seller, was to go ahead and get this done. Council members, if you are prepared to go forward this evening and if you want to make a motion to approve this acquisition agreement, I would ask for a little bit of unique language. We are working with the seller as diligently as we can. There's not as, maybe as, as prompt as responsiveness as, as we would like. And so we think we're down to maybe just some small nuances with respect to the agreement with all of the material components agreed upon, the earnest money, the acquisition price, the acreage, the form of the deeds, all those things. But if the council does make a motion to approve this acquisition agreement tonight, I would respectfully request that you approve it and delegate authority to my office as well as the city manager to make any non-substantive modifications that may be required by the seller and still authorize the mayor to execute the document once we have a finalized perfected agreement.
Okay, um, do we have any public comment on this? I should have asked, no public comment, okay. Teresa, I know if you, know if you have anything you want to add to that.
I did have a few things, I just, there's no public comment, okay. Yeah, I, I've done these presentations for the green spaces before, so Ken, Ken gives all the legal part, and then I'll, I'll tell you a little bit more about the property, the consideration, considerations for purchase. So as you all are well aware, we started out the green space bond initiative with $25 million. To date, we have purchased six properties, and those, the first was in January of 2018, and that was the former Milton Country Club, which, if you'll give me permission to call that FMCC for the rest of my discussion, all the way to our most recent purchases of Webb and Hamby Roads, which are in the eastern part of the city, which were in January of 2019. So of course, you know that the Country Club, FMCC, is 139 acres, although only about 130 of them are passive, were paid for with green space bond funds. You can see those right in the center of the map, that big area. This property is adjacent to that, that, the first green space that we purchased, the FMCC. And just a brief background of the history of this property, in June of 2018, it was put, listed by the former owner for sale at 1.59, and it was eventually reduced to 1.35. And in December of 2018, we actually did make an original offer to purchase the property, but we did find out that it was sort of in a limbo of going into foreclosure, so we weren't able to make an offer with the, the former owner of it. So then I, I guess the foreclosure process takes a little while, and the bank put it back on the market in July of 2019 at 1.29. We made an offer at that point, and we negotiated back and forth with the seller, with the bank. We were getting closer to a price, but they were, for a while, immovable about due diligence period. They wanted to, to give us a due diligence period of three days. And by law, we are required to do an environmental phase one, and that was simply impossible. So we, we were, were firm on that. So in October, we were given a request by the bank to make our best and final offer because they had multiple bidders. And at that point, we made the offer for 1.25 with the firm 45-day due diligence. In talking with Gerard and Davis, we, we do know that's a tight time, but we did believe that we could achieve that. So we ultimately agreed on the 1.25 purchase price, which works out to a little bit over $104,000 an acre, $104,166.67, which I'm sure Bernadette appreciates that specific number. Our acquisition agent, who is a licensed real estate broker, has done a market analysis of 20 properties within five miles of this property. They are all zoned AG1, and they are, they vary in size from four to 25 acres. And he has found an average market value of $124,695. That is not an appraisal for this property. It's simply a market appraisal for what the average AG1 property in this area is, is offered for sale at. That was some concluded sales, some pending purchases, as well as some active listings. So the property highlights I want to go through really quick. The adjacency to FMCC, providing southern access to FMCC, a view shed, and protecting property from development. The adjacency to, to the public amenity of FMCC, you, you saw on the original map where the, the FMCC is located, and this property shares a boundary with it. The road that's going north to south there is Freemenville Road. The, sorry, the, the access, the southern access that this property would provide, this is from the FMCC master plan that council approved in August of this year. You probably recognize it, it was a long process, but this was the, the master plan that y'all approved. As you can see from here, there are four access points to FMCC. This one on Dinsmore is pedestrian-only. This one at the Active Acres is where there is parking, that's where the swim and tennis is. This blue area right here, and this blue area right here, is only for emergency personnel and service vehicles, city service vehicles. Those areas do not allow for regular in and out. So as you can see, really, the only places to access the property now are at the northern end. And, and I know you all know that this, we've turned all of our plans on their side. This is actually 90 degrees from the way the property really sits north to, north, south. So we've, we've struggled with the issue of the southern access to the property. And for people who are coming to hike, to, to walk the property right now, the only way to get in would be the Dinsmore and through the Active Acres. And there are times when the Active Acres are, are, would be filled with swim and tennis. So, so we have long desired a, a way to get to the southern end of the property. So this parcel is where this red star is. This can show you that we would abut the southern end of the property, and we could then be able to drive in and, or, or walk in, however, you know, whatever council decided, and have access to the southern end of the property without having to go through the swim tennis area. So the, the view shed, just quickly, I think everybody recognizes the property. We haven't had access to the property, so I wasn't able to go on and take pictures like I have of the other ones. I just took them from the road, but this, I think everybody probably knows where this property is from driving by. There's approximately 550 feet of road frontage there. And on the left, this, this is the driveway to the property, which, which could, if council decided, provide access through the property into the property that we already own at FMCC. So the final thing is, has to do with development. The property is again in the blue area over here. This is just showing that there is no flood plain on the property, nor are there any steep slopes. These are the areas in purple and the shaded areas from our mod, our GIS mod. There, there is some topo in there, which will, will be quite lovely, actually, to travel through. But there, it is buildable property. So I would not want to speculate on what future, current or future council may or may not decide to do with this property, but it does offer flexibility and multiple options. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Colt Whitall from the Chair of the Milton Green Space Advisory Committee to say a few words on behalf of the committee.
Hello, thank you. A few, a few quick comments, and I apologize, I'm going to, I'm going to, there's actually a fair amount of stuff. I'm going to try and delete a few things so I don't recover some of the same territory. But the, first of all, let me just say, I'm Colt Whitall, I'm Chair of the Milton Green Space Advisory Committee. And just kind of for the record, and also for citizens that are watching, I'll give a little bit of background into our committee, how we arrived at this specific decision, and a few things that I think are important to consider when we talk about the recommendation we're making. And by the way, we reconfirmed it over the weekend and tonight. Our committee absolutely unanimously supports this recommendation at this price. We feel very, very comfortable about it. And that's coming from a lot of research and experience on the committee in real estate in this market. And I'll go into that in more detail. So first, just as a reminder, Green Space Committee was created, I believe we created in May of 2017. We got off and running, we've met about 40 times since then, including site visits, 35, 40 times. We've met about 40 times since then, including site visits 35, 40 times, visited quite a number of sites around town, made a lot of presentations to this council. We have seven members. They were selected in kind of a different process. We had about 30, 40 applications. City council down-selected just based on, they wanted experience in real estate, they wanted experience in things that were potentially relevant, like conservation, forestry, ecology, and frankly, just experience in government and in city and in Milton. So based on that, selected the committee. We've been operating, like I said, about two and a half years, and we all take it very, very seriously. Teresa gave the update on where we are with the overall program, so I'm not going to go into that. Other than to say, we're very proud of what we've accomplished so far. You know, we think we have filled all of the guidelines that we developed originally, and we have stuck within the rules of the bond language. And part of the reason we were able to do that is a lot of involvement early on from Georgia Conservancy in setting up some parameters in the form of goals and a screening criteria for properties within the city to, you know, to help us identify, you know, what makes a good property for conservation with green space bond funds. We estimate, one thing that I don't think Teresa mentioned, there's no way to know exactly, but, you know, part of our role is to help preserve land from development. We estimate, and it's rough, we have probably prevented the development of about 120 to 160 homes in Milton, just as an FYI. So kind of interesting. Some of the land we buy is along creeks and streams and water, and we're buying it for conservation land. Some of the land we buy is totally buildable, doesn't have as much conservation value, but we have both objectives, and we mix both. So like I said, we began our work by engaging the Georgia Conservancy to help us develop a framework, and there's three key parts of the framework that I think are relevant to this discussion today that are priorities for us on the committee in selecting land. First, buying land that has proximity to existing public lands or offers access or egress to existing public lands by road or trail. Anything like that scores very highly in our framework. And why is that? Well, it's because you're talking about expanding on assets the city already owns, right, which creates more room, more access for more people. Second, buying buildable land to put some brakes on development. We can't always buy buildable land, and there's no question about it. We bought some non-buildable land, like within the former Milton Country Club, you know, there's some flood plain. There's also some highly buildable land, 30, 40, maybe 50 houses, depending on what plot you look at, were prevented from being developed within the Milton Country Club. Third, buying land that preserves the rural views of Milton is very important to us. You know, we all believe in rural view shed. It's a great value to us for all the reasons we talk about here often. We think that this particular purchase meets all three of those criteria in spades, particularly number one. So several things of interest, and I'll try not to be too repetitive here, but it connects to the Milton Country Club, former Milton Country Club property, which that's big, as Teresa said. I mean, the access egress into that has always been a little bit of a challenge. You know, we thought it was doable, we knew we had a couple of options. This gives us an outstanding option. It's not only a big wide option, it's a very pretty option, to be honest. I mean, you kind of, you know, you sort of drive up this little gully up over a hill, you know, or walk, however we want to do it. It provides a lot of options to get into the former Milton Country Club, and that is outstanding. To track, we got the barn. The barn is very cute. I imagine lots of Christmas photos, Christmas cards have been made in front of the barn. We'll see. The, you know, and as far as development goes, I'm not a builder. You know, we have a number of people on our committee that kind of look at this stuff, and everybody tells me it's probably at least six to 12, you know, well, couldn't be more than 12, you know, but it could be 12. It could be 10, it could be six, but it's a pretty buildable lot, which is part of the reason why it commands a pretty high price per acre. So let me just say something, a couple things on pricing. For, for an acreage, and we've been looking at this, you know, we have been actively in the real estate market for the last two and a half years, looking at prices all the time. And I will tell you, we rule out a lot of properties based on price. This is not one of them. By the way, a lot of people come to us with properties and recommend properties, and we're like, you know, no, doesn't meet our criteria on price. This one was within the guidance price that we gave to the city council, and on top of that, it is a reasonable value for a piece of land in this part of town that is a very pretty property that, that is, most likely supports a very high yield in houses relative to the size. So I'll just say that on price. The price is fair, the price is reasonable, the price was negotiated by a pro that works a lot in conservation for other cities in this market, and we have been working with for a while. We feel good about the price. So let me just close with this, and I think I can take questions. It's up to you. But the time to do this is now. The property is available, the funds are available. They may not be, the next time this property is available, the funds may not be available. So right now, the property is available, the funds are available. We have negotiated a reasonable contract at a reasonable price by a professional that, you know, they know what they're doing. The seven members of our committee are absolutely anonymous, and we want to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions first for Teresa or Colt, council?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to update and give you one more piece of information as you all go into deliberations. I think something Teresa said made me think of it. Because of the timeline, this contract anticipates both the due diligence in 45 days and the closing at the end of that 45 days. A little unusual. A lot of times, we'd see a due diligence period, then maybe 30 days closing thereafter. This one anticipates both of those almost occurring in tandem. The contract, however, also anticipates that if we want to delay closing, we can, but it's $100 per day to delay closing. So for instance, if we wanted to delay closing because we're not ready for 30 days, well, that's $3,000. So we hope we don't need to do that and maybe won't, but we do have to get to phase one, as you know, and I know that the city manager wants us to go ahead and get an appraisal just to lock that down and have that in our file so we can evaluate it. So I say all that, I hope that doesn't occur, likely won't. I will tell you, we're doing everything we can to make sure we don't need to utilize that provision, but it's there. And again, Mr. Mayor, one more thing, and I'll be quiet. If the council does make a motion to approve, I would like that flexibility we talked about to allow the senior staff, the city manager, my office to make non-substantive edits and still have the requisite authority for the mayor to sign.
Okay. All right. I have a question for, thank you Colt, thank you Teresa. I have a legal question for you, Ken. Obviously, with this parcel, we also impact and border neighbors. Does the city have the ability, or the council have the ability to, at some point, either sell portions of that property that may not be of use to the city or, you know, implement some type of buffer to protect the neighbors?
We could, we could do both. The city has the authority to sell property that it no longer needs. In fact, there's specific statutory language that allows the city to sell even privately without a public process, what are called small or unusually shaped portions or parcels of property that have no independent value. You know, we'd have to subdivide it. We'd have to actually make the parcel, but we could do that. Or of course, it's city property, so to the extent that the city wanted to put some sort of a robust buffer, landscape strip, or whatever, onto the property, adjoining whichever property boundary, we of course would have the right to do that as well.
Any other questions for Ken or Laura?
So along those same lines, and with the use of the green space bond money, can we use that for the demolition of the house? I think there might be a phrase in the bond language that allows for improvements because of the location of the house and the fact that we likely will not be utilizing it for city use for some time, and we just would not want it to be an eyesore and, yeah, liability and attraction to...
Yeah, Councilmember Bentley, I've, it's been a while since I've looked at it. I think actually, the last time I looked at it was at your urging on another matter, and I believe that we can use the funds to sort of get these pieces of green space property ready. And so I feel, I feel comfortable we could probably do that.
Okay, that's, that's good, because I think that that would help just restore it to a more natural state and make it safe while, you know, it could be quite a while before we determine what we want to do with that. Also, along those lines, we've been doing a good job with maintaining the green space, and so this, because it is surrounded by, you know, large parcel owners, that we want to make sure that their property rights are preserved, that we keep it maintained to the level, you know, keep the grass cut, keep the fence lines cleared. And then finally, my last suggestion would be that, and I don't foresee a problem with this, would be just to make sure we secure the property, you know, with the gate, and make sure that it's known that it's, nothing's happening with it while time goes by. Those are my suggestions, and I think most of council might support that.
Joe? So Ken, along those lines and following up on what Laura just asked, we've purchased property in the past that basically we bought it because it was the right moment in time, even though we didn't have necessarily the funds to develop or a plan in place for use or anything like that. Is there anything special about this purchase that compels us to do something within a particular time period?
I'm not aware of any such time restraint.
So, so once we make a determination that we want to close on the property, we wait the due diligence period, the property gets purchased by the city, as long as, and we do our normal thing, which is, you know, lock it up tight, make sure that, you know, it can't be used in any, you know, fashion, we really don't need to do anything else with it. I mean, the green space bond doesn't compel us to say, hey, the property needs to be done to this, this, and this, in this amount of time, right?
Right, no, that's, that's exactly right. In fact, you know, one of the beauties of green space is, is that if you leave the property alone in its vegetative state, you've almost accomplished the very basis for the bond in the first place.
So, so let's just pretend for a second that we go look at the house that's on the property. I mean, right now, everything I've heard is, you know, it's a demo, somebody's waiting for a bulldozer to roll onto the property and knock it over into a pile, as our friend Bert Hewitt used to say. But in reality, we could get into the property, we could find that, you know what, it's not as bad off as everybody thinks, and we could come up with, with some amount of time, a plan on how to use the existing structure, either as a meeting room, a storage facility, something of that nature. But again, there's nothing that causes us to have to follow a particular course. Just because we're buying it doesn't mean the property can't maintain a house structure.
Right, so two thoughts on that. Number one, the first answer I have is, to the extent that we close on it, we have some sort of a clock ticking to go out and do something on the property. I don't think so. When it comes time for the council with staff to make a determination as to how to use that structure or whether to raise it, that will implicate us taking a good hard look at what our intention is. If it's to use it for a use that could arguably be converted to an active use, I'd need to give that some thought, because we might have to then repay the green space fund back to the extent that we convert it to that use. Or if you use it as a passive nature preserve, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we just, we'd have to take a look at it, what the council's plan is, but there's no time limit on that, I don't think.
Okay. Can I just confirm? I don't think there's any, you know, thoughts of other than this is just a passive with the green space.
That's everything I have heard is consistent with that. I understand. This was just a hypothetical, I thought.
So I had a lot of questions, but for the most part, I think they've all been answered in terms of the funding for this, how we figured out fair market value, Teresa, so thank you for those explanations. The, probably the last question I want to ask is, obviously, this purchase impacts potential, well, potentially impacts neighboring landowners, citizens of the city.
Yes.
Did we contact those individuals to let them know our intentions, and is that something that we would normally do?
All I can speak for, Councilmember Longoria, is with respect to my office, we did not. So I can't speak to what city staff may have done, and they may have. I don't know if that's ordinary or not, but I know that we did not.
Is any of the content, would it have been covered under the executive session rules?
That would have been something that would have been factored into, particularly pre-contract. I mean, now that we're in due diligence, I would be much more comfortable with bringing in adjacent property owners, because remember, we can still get out of the contract for 45 days for no reason, and for any reason, without losing any funds. But prior to us going under contract, there has been a very, I think, disciplined effort by this city and the green space folks to keep the city's intentions very close to the vest, and that's on purpose. The law anticipates that very thing.
I might want to just make a comment on that, and I think we've, I know I've discussed it with Steve. Maybe in the future, as we do this, we might want to, because I noticed what has happened in the past is, city may not be, you know, keeping everything close to the vest on negotiations, but property sellers and agents and whatnot are talking to people. So maybe in the future, if we do something like this, we'd, they have to sign a clause where, you know, until there's an actual contract, they're, they're not...
That would be my expectation, so I regret if that's not been occurring, but I understand your point.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, staff, again. Joe? Oh, sorry, one last thing.
Of course.
So, once we purchase the property, actually, if we went through a planning cycle, we went through an investigation, we tried to figure out what actually we were going to do with the property, we could find out, you know what, it's not really the best, the best thing for what we thought it was going to be, and we could actually sell the property back on the market. Is that correct?
Well, let me, let me offer up this in response to that, because I'm going to hedge just a moment. Local governments are not, and I know you're not suggesting this, you're not suggesting...
Right, I know where you're going to go.
But local governments are not in the business of buying property for the purpose of flipping it, and I may repeat again, that's not what he suggested. But I would want us to think long and hard before we thought about doing that, but it is likely that we could, we could do it.
But there is no prohibition on selling parcels or making that, if it can be subdivided, selling a portion of that if a local property owner or somebody wanted to, and the city was amenable to it, because it made, we could still accomplish what we want to do with it. That is, that is an option, and the funds would go back. If it was purchased through the green space, it would go back to the green space.
Correct. Right, right. And, but I want to be, I mean, you've heard me say this before, though, local governments have strict rules with respect to how they sell property. It's typically by public auction. But there is an exception that allows local governments to basically sell by private sale as opposed to public auction unusually shaped parcels. We've talked about this at some length with respect to the golf course, so the rough edges of the golf course. So to the extent that the council wanted to think about doing that here, I would give you the exact same answer here, is I think we do have the right to do it.
Yeah, I just want to clarify my earlier comments legally, again, within respect to neighbors and whatnot, the city council would have the ability, correct, to initiate buffers or possible sale if it made sense to the city and all parties involved with the, so that the city still had the use of it.
I agree with that.
Okay, just want to clarify that. Okay, anything else? All right, I will open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 19-236, approving and delegating authority to Gerard and Davis to make non-substantive changes to the purchase agreement.
That, thank you, Councilmember Bentley, and still have the mayor with the requisite authority to sign.
Yes.
Okay.
Second. Have a motion, and a second. Is that, who was the second from? Have a motion for approval, as read by Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Coons. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. We'll move on to reports. Thank you, Colt and Teresa, I'm sorry. And Colt, thank you for all the work that your, your board has done. Okay, any, we've got some, a couple staff reports, but anything the council wants to report on?
I do, Joe.
Yeah?
And I've talked to, and called everybody here in the council as well. We've had...
We've had some questions on some of the language in our special events code 64-1596, and also with things happening in cities around Milton, not necessarily in Milton, but maybe in Buckett or Las Vegas, where party houses were coming up. We found some language that might be just not necessarily with the intent of the zoning code. We're not really sure exactly what needs to happen, but on that code, I would love for council to look to see if that language might need some refinement within it. Obviously, we're dealing with definitions of public and private property, we're dealing with definitions of public nuisance versus private nuisance, things of that nature. I think it would be good if we just looked at it again to see if the code is, needs to be more clear. And I don't know legally, Ken, if we need to make that go to a work session, or, or how we would look at something like that.
Thank you, Councilmember Coons, I appreciate that.
I'd agree with that, too. I would agree. You know, obviously, we need to, to work on that and have been, so yeah, I would support that.
You know, I appreciate that, and actually, I've got good news. I will report to the council that it is already being looked at, and the city manager has been engaging my office on that. We understand some of the issues, and I think that the city manager will likely bring in some recommendations to the council very shortly, and even Councilmember Coons with respects to some of the issues that have generated that. Just please understand, we are looking at those very intently as well, and I have been brought in, in a meaningful way to look at it.
Okay, so I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
And that's, and that's perfectly fine. I understand perfectly.
All right, so, well, then we don't need to do anything. But we will.
We do, and it is, yeah, no, that's, I thank everybody. I would agree with that, so thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, everybody, as well.
Anybody else? Anything? If not, then we added an executive session to discuss land acquisition. Do I have a motion?
You got staff reports? Do I do staff reports first?
Um, we can do staff reports if we'd like, yeah, yeah, actually, they're on the agenda first.
That'd be nice.
Don't want to make you wait.
We ain't going to be here.
Actually, what you guys just messed up, they were going to slide on out, I told them they could wait. Since council, no, keep you guys, if we could get community development to, Prag?
So I did have my two pages. Just want to give you a brief highlights of the various projects which are going on in the department, update on the, on the three preservation ordinance. So on November 7th, 2019, we have scheduled a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the Citizens Stakeholders Committee to discuss the draft of the ordinance and to achieve consensus before we come to the city council. So as you know, our department first worked for around four months with the Citizens Stakeholders Committee, and this committee finally voted to approve the ordinance in July. Then we started working with the Planning Commission, we have worked with the Planning Commission for around three months now. So both these bodies are in consensus on super majority of the things, but there are some issues which we would like to discuss it further. So we will be having this joint meeting on November 7, and then we will be presenting it to the city council. The Trailmaster Plan, where the next Citizens Advisory Committee meeting is on November 6. We also had a site visit scheduled with the committee members last month, and we basically drove around Crab Apple and Deerfield area just to show them the various proposed trails which they are proposing to be part of the Trailmaster Plan. Equestrian friendly practices, our department has started working on a project that will help to preserve and enhance the equestrian and agriculture character of Milton by streamlining the zoning ordinance and by streamlining the various development practices. So we had a very good committee meeting with the Equestrian Committee on October 16. We will be coming in front of the Planning Commission in November, and we plan to streamline our zoning code and the various development review practices. Hazardous household paint and chemical collection event, this event was scheduled on September 28. We collected nearly 14,000 paint, 14,000 pounds of latex paint, over 1,400 pounds of oil-based paint, and 750 pounds of pesticides, and over 450 pounds of single-use batteries on this single day. I do not know why people paint so much in their houses. Reverse Alive Event, that was scheduled for the, this Saturday, this event was canceled because of the rain, and we plan to reschedule this event the next few coming weeks. Thank you. Any questions?
Prag, any questions for Prag? Okay, thank you. Finance? You don't have to step up, you're here.
I know we've heard a lot from finance over the last few months with the budget being in place and the mileage rate, so I will just go over a few brief things. As September's come to a close, so is our fiscal year, so we are working on preparing the books for the audit, going over all of our final reconciliations. There'll be no financial statements for September, as those are part of the CAFER that you'll see towards March. We have our supplemental bills out for all of our appeals, we have our refunds up to date. All current supplementals that are not already possibly past due will be due on December 2nd, along with the 2019 bills. We've been working diligently with any residents who may have any questions about the new exemptions or their tax bills, and we've been receiving a lot of good feedback, haven't had anyone really upset this year. We have our alcohol beverage license annual renewals out, and they will be due on November 15. And then lastly, we're just working on some enhancements to our long-term planning and our financial impact of department requests through the budget, so we're looking to bring you some even more transparency and further information regarding any budget requests coming in the future.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Now, if we could move on to, do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss land acquisition?
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a motion from Councilmember Ward, second from Councilmember Coons? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.[1001.13]